Okay. Call a meeting to order. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for coming. This is a public hearing, but I want to open the public hearing a little bit unusually, and then we're going to introduce the Coquitlam West Area Youth Council. I had the opportunity during the 14-minute gap between the closed meeting and the public hearing to have a 15-minute meeting with the Coquitlam Area Youth Council, who've joined us to watch what a public hearing looks like, and then after that, a public council meeting. And we're most pleased to see this group of young people that wants to get more involved in their community, they organize events, they really, they have the spirit of youth, but they also want to make sure that youth get more community spirit and get more involved in our community. And so welcome very much to the Coquitlam Area Youth Council, or the West Area Youth Council. Good evening, my name is Richard Stewart, I'm the mayor of Coquitlam. On behalf of city council, I'd like to welcome everyone this evening. This is a public hearing into the bylaws that will be introduced to you in a moment by the deputy city clerk. Council for the city of Coquitlam has given first reading to these bylaws, and has directed that a public hearing be held. Staff from the city's planning and development department will present a summary of each proposed bylaw, and then we'll open the floor to anyone present who has views that they want to present on the proposed bylaw. Those that have pre-registered would be given the first opportunity to speak, and then after that, we'll open the floor to everyone else. I stress to all of you that this is a public hearing. It's an opportunity for anyone who has a view on the proposed bylaws to make that view known to council members. Council members are here with an open mind, and are here to listen to your input. No one has prejudged the outcome of these applications, but there are some rules. This is not a question-and-answer period, it's not an opportunity to debate the relative merits of the proposed bylaws with either council members, with staff, or with those in the audience that might differ in opinion from your particular view. And so I ask you to restrict your comments to the proposed bylaw, be as brief and concise as possible. We ask the speakers to respect a five-minute time limit, you can come up more than once, but everyone gets a chance to speak for the first time for five minutes. Speakers are permitted to speak more than once if they choose. I ask that the audience be respectful of each speaker, and allow that speaker to make his or her point without interruption, no clapping, no booing, thank you very much. As chair of this meeting, we reserve the right to conclude any presentation that doesn't relate to the bylaw, that becomes abusive, or that becomes repetitive of views that that speaker has already made known to council members. If you wish to provide a written submission to your item that becomes part of the permanent record, please note that you must submit that during the public hearing prior to the adjournment of the item we're dealing with. If it's item two, you must, we'll adjourn item two after that, council can't get any more information about that until council makes its decision. Just after the public hearing, we'll adjourn a regular council meeting, we have some agenda items, but we'll also have council the opportunity to vote on the four items on the public hearing agenda, although they may defer one or two items if they wish, if they've requested additional information from staff, for example. So I'll now call on Ms. Lower to introduce the bylaws in tonight's agenda, and the planning and development staff to make the presentation on the first item.
Thank you, Your Worship. Item one, bylaw number 4280, 2012, is a zoning amendment application for the property located at 3368 Mason Avenue, and staff from planning and development will provide a brief overview.
Good evening, Your Worship and council members. This site is located on the south side of Mason Avenue, west of Coast Meridian Road. The site is designated "Street-Oriented Village Home" in the official community plan. The zoning on the site, and to the north, is RS2 Suburban Residential. Zoning to the east and south is RTM1, Street-Oriented Village Home Residential, and to the west, RS8 Large Village Single Family Residential. The site currently has a single-family residence on the lot. The applicant is seeking to rezone the site to RM1 Street-Oriented Village Home Residential, consistent with the OCP land use designation, to facilitate development of 16 street-oriented village homes. Staff are recommending second and third readings to bylaw number 4280. Thank you.
One moment, please. Counselor Secora has a question.
Yeah, I've got a question. What is on a community plan map for this area?
I'm sorry, could you?
What is on a community plan map for this area?
What does the OCP say?
Street-Oriented Village Residential. The site is designated "Street-Oriented Village Residential."
It's what?
Street-Oriented Village Residential.
Okay. Is it a single-family residential, or what is it?
No, it's townhome, Street-Oriented Village Townhome.
Okay, thank you. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you very much. I don't have a list of speakers for any items. Okay, so we're going to do this, starting from the beginning. Are there any speakers to this item? If you'd like to speak, please step forward. Come up to that microphone right there, and you'll need to state your name and address for the record. If you have small children, bring them up with you. There you go. Because we always like little children.
Hi, excuse the hat, so sorry. My name is Mandara Lubavitz, and I reside at 3367 Darwin Avenue. It would be, well, on my papers is marked at Unit 18, but just below Carmelo Drive there, just around the corner. And I'm prompted here by my daughter, Sen, who has something to say to you, but I would just like to give it some context, what she's about to talk about. We've just moved into the Burke Mountain area, and we realize that there is going to be much development there. And to our dismay, every time we look around, more trees are taken down, and realize the land value is, you know, it's worth money, this land. However, we're hoping that you will consider, in the bylaw, changes that you're making, and for future bylaws, that you would consider leaving some green spaces in these areas, because they're quickly being taken over. And, as I mentioned, my daughter has something to say, and then I'll continue. Let's see if you can...
My name is Sen, I am eight years old, and this is what I want to say. Please, council, I want to treat the trees the way you and I want to be treated: great, strong, and powerful. The trees give us oxygen to breathe, they keep us alive. Without trees, we would die. Don't cut down the trees. If you do, less oxygen will be in the world, and we would suffer without anything in our lungs. It would feel strange and painful to have in our lungs, wouldn't you think? That's all I have.
And it was very, very well put. Thank you.
Yes, Sen is currently studying government in her community school, Lee Elementary, and this was just perfect timing to give her the opportunity to share her thoughts and see how this is organized. And, yeah, thank you very much.
Well, I want to thank you on behalf of council for bringing some young people to see what this is all about, because this is how democracy works, and we want to hear from people. Thank you. Are there any other speakers to this item? Oops.
Oh, sorry, I almost forgot. If I could present this, my daughter ran around and got some signatures of members of the community who also feel the same, and there's a letter to the effect of what we're talking about. And if I could present that to go on the record?
Just present it to Ms. Lower here, and it'll get circulated, and be formed part of the permanent record as well. Thank you very much. Please come forward. Actually, Ms. Lower, one moment, please. Where, where council would like to... Please go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Stewart and the council. My name is Amande Bajaw, I'm from Vancouver, and I'm part-owner of 3362 Mason Avenue, that's a property just next to the property on hand. My objection to this bylaw is, it's the same developer who submitted this application for the rezoning that also developing 3362 Mason Avenue, and I invested huge amount in that property, and he was supposed to deliver me the serviced lots last year, and he hasn't done so because of the lack of funds. He's supposed to submit about $650,000 into the city in order to develop that. If we are letting this application go and rezoning this, he doesn't have funds. It's affecting the land value, and it's very discouraging, people like me who are coming from Vancouver to invest in your city, and we're not getting the work, and city cannot enforce them to develop the lots that they are promising to develop. Right now, they're sitting on the 3362 for last almost three years, and the city has done all the work, city's waiting for the funds for last about four or five months on 3362. The same developer hasn't done anything. He doesn't have funds, he's selling the lots to people like us who want to invest, and raising funds from us and not doing anything. So I really object to this bylaw. He should be enforced to complete his previous project, that 3362, before going for the next one. Thank you very much.
Okay, I will tell you, this is about the use of that lamp, so we quite often don't get to delve into who owns it, and we actually, that should be transparent, or it should be rather invisible to us. We should be making decisions on what's the best use of that land, but we're all curious and interested, and I think Counselor Reed wants to raise a question, but Mr. McIntyre might have a little bit of information to give.
That's my question, was to Mr. McIntyre. I would like to know if the zoning is the same, the zoning to the adjacent land is the same as this land, and do we have an application in?
Mr. McIntyre.
Thank you, Worship. The, yeah, thanks very much. That shows the zoning on the abutting properties, so the one to the west along Mason is RS8, and the property to the east, further along Mason, is RTM1, as what's proposed for this site here. We would have to speak with the, with this lady, and just to get the particulars of what's going on. Sometimes business deals go sour. Typically, for the city, with development applications through the rezoning process and of its subdivision or development permit, we make sure that securities are received at the necessary points to ensure that, you know, roadworks are done or services are put in. So we, I guess we cover off our interest, or the public's interests, in ensuring that development goes ahead as it probably should. But sometimes, private deals and arrangements, that's really a private matter between those property owners. But we can talk with you offline to get a little more information, and try to help if we can.
Yeah, I'm not interested in that, Mr. McIntyre. I just want to know, do we, do you know if we have an application in, on that property for building, a building application?
I'm not aware, perhaps the others down can speak to that. Just one, we're just going to get a little bit of information.
Your Worship, I'm assuming we're talking about the property to the immediate west, the RS8 zone property?
Number 21.
Number 21, yes. There's a subdivision application with the city at this time, that as Mr. McIntyre has indicated, we would only proceed, the city would proceed to process that application, and to finalize the subdivision only when the applicant has hired the appropriate civil engineering and consultants, and they've proceeded through the required process. Quite often, a developer, for whatever reason, may not proceed in a very timely way, and we just have to wait.
Thank you very much.
I, the other thing, I just wanted to check, the plans that he's submitting for 3368, to complete that, I think the services has to go through 3362 to even complete the 3368 project. So he would have to complete 3362 before going to 3368.
Yeah, well, we'll explain this part. Today is the rezoning, it's only about the land use. Sometimes we do delve into the makeup, the shape of the building, and those sorts of things. Those are development permit issues, and staff won't ever recommend a development permit until all of the servicing has been taken care of. We know where the servicing is going to go, and it has to go across a neighboring property that the right of way, rights of way have been established and things. Good with all that?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other speakers to this item? Please step forward.
Steve Seibel, on the 1286 Hollybrook. And what I'm wondering about this townhouse development is where the cars are going to go. You guys, the planners have, they're going to shut down Creekstone Terrace at the bottom, and at the top, going on to David. There's going to be no outlet on Creekstone Terrace, and they're pushing everybody to Hollybrook Street. So all the cars coming off of David are coming down to Hollybrook Street to service these lots, and everyone else in the neighborhood. Hollybrook is going to be one of the most busiest streets. It's a downhill street, and it's going to be one of the most busiest streets in that neighborhood. It's only thoroughfare, other than Coast Meridian. I wonder, is there any, any planning or any other outlets that will be planned into this, or is it just going to be Hollybrook as the main exit to David?
Is there any information we can give on that?
In 1982, there was a plan that were called for Creekstone Terrace when it was developed, that it would be open to David connector. That is now being closed off for a cul-de-sac. The bottom, they're going to close the bottom of Creekstone Terrace off for a fire lane. All the traffic from Creekstone Terrace is going to spill on to Hollybrook to get out, either down to Mason or up to David. Hollybrook is going to take the total brunt of all the traffic that's coming through this area. And the more development that happens in the area, it's just going to, just, everybody's pushing on to Hollybrook, it's going to make it one of the most busiest streets, up and down. And the, the street is not designed to have that much traffic, it's not even wide enough for, for the traffic that's going to be going through there over the years. RS8 is going to be multi-family, single-family, large family, they're going to have legal basement suites, that's going to add. Plus, on Mason, there's going to be townhouses, as the density is going to be, I don't know how many units will be altogether, but I assume there would be probably 100, 250 families living in that area. And everybody will be going up and down Hollybrook. No consideration was taken for the residents that pay taxes for 25 to 30 years on that street, to make sure that there was enough exits that allows other people to get in and out of the area through their own streets, such as Creekstone Terrace.
Okay, Mr. McIntyre.
Yeah, I'm sorry, we don't have a graphic of the, of the street network in this area, but we can certainly arrange for that to be provided. My recollection is that Hollybrook north of here does actually not go through to David. This is a looping street that would eventually be connected and come back down, so it, it's sort of a closed circuit north of Mason. And so Mason is sort of the access point out to Coast Meridian.
Hollybrook has a left-hand turn, or it would be a right-hand turn coming up, going north, and coming down into Hollybrook, into this neighborhood, it will be a right-hand turn coming down. There's no left-hand turn provided. The left-hand turn probably should have went on Creekstone Terrace. Creekstone Terrace can, can take a lot of their, their people, that, those families that will move into that area, they should have their own exit, David. Otherwise, they're coming down Hollybrook to get out to Coast Meridian from down below, or they, if they would go to the top, to the north on Hollybrook, they would have to go right, and then go, would not be able to even make a left-hand turn. The planning in this area is totally been changed for the, for people that have money, for other people that have long-term residents that live in this area, they have no say whatsoever what's going on here. You guys put everything on to Hollybrook, the total brunt, the traffic goes on to Hollybrook, and there's, there's 20 other homes there, multi-family homes, on Creekstone Terrace that have no exit, other than what they will, what they'll have on Hollybrook in the next 10, 15, 20 years. I, I don't feel that is correct. I feel it's, it's manipulative for the big dollar, it's a biased decision for the developers of the day that have the money, and us people there that we've, long-term residents, we're not even allowed to put a cul-de-sac. We are supposed to put a thoroughfare road through to Creekstone Terrace, so that these people can access their properties from our street, on our property. Not only we have to put a thoroughfare road through our properties to access Creekstone Terrace, we are expected to pay for the back of our properties to develop that, so that we can have one-third, the developer of the day that did Creekstone Terrace only put two-thirds of the road in. We are now responsible to pay for the last third of the road to be completed, and we are not even allowed to develop off that property. I think we should have a proper graph up here, and everybody should have a proper look at what's going on here. There's not enough information on what you're showing us here.
Okay, staff, we're pulling up a bigger map here.
Your Worship, if I could, now that the gentleman has sort of expanded his description, I think we have a sense of what the issue is. There's been some properties along Hollybrook that are well north of the subject property that have looked at subdivision opportunities, and the plan, I think, as Rowell will show here, it'll show some different road layout options, and there seems to be some issues around that, whether a road should go through, and who should dedicate what, and construct what at different times. It doesn't pertain to the subject property, but it's a, a general neighborhood issue.
That's Mandara, the petition.
Sorry, it's not toggling over to the document camera.
I'll give staff a second here to, to see whether we, it won't go there?
It's, I'm pressing the button, but it's not toggling over.
Hmm. All of those divas, they probably wrecked it. I think we can afford a couple of minutes to fix it. There you go. You got it. You are amazing.
Now, this plan was the 1984, 2005 plan, is that not correct? This, this, what you're showing here is not relevant to what it is today.
Okay, yeah, it shows a bigger context, it helps. Okay, so at the top of Hollybrook is a right-in, right-out?
Yeah, and, and, Your Worship, if I can, this is, this is a concept that was in the original plan, there's been some adjustments to this overall network as part of the ongoing subdivision development in the area. I think what the gentleman's trying to show is potential traffic running up towards David from this neighborhood.
Well, as you can see, everything is spilling on to Hollybrook, top and bottom. There's no other access, there's only one exit. And everybody on Hollybrook is going to have traffic consistently coming up and down that hill. It's not a very steep hill, but it is a hill just the same. Winter time comes, there's going to be snowplows, there's going to be people parked on the streets like they all do. They don't like to go to their backyards and their back alleys to park in their garage, they like to park on the street. Everybody's going to be using Hollybrook, it's going to be the most busiest street. And in my opinion, and a lot of my neighbors' opinion, it's not right, it's misplanned, and it's a biased planning that has happened here. In 1982, it shows an unbiased plan in 1982, it shows there's two connectors, one from Creekstone Terrace, and the second one from Hollybrook. Now, why is that not the case today? Why were they allowed to put a cul-de-sac up the top of Creekstone Terrace?
So Creekdon, Creekstone Terrace is at the edge of Lot 7, if you will, on David. It doesn't anymore, yeah. Okay, well, it isn't, yeah, it's not particularly specific to this property, but it's an issue that...
I understand it's not specific to the property, but as the families move into this area...
Understood.
It should be dealt with now.
No, in that way, I'm going to suggest that we'll have staff review this and figure out whether there's a, a solution. Thank you very much for bringing it to us. Okay, are there any other speakers to this item? Are there any other speakers to this item? Third and final time? Okay, we'll go through the speakers list here on council, we've got Counselor Hodge.
Yeah, my, pardon, my question was answered, was on Hollybrook. My understanding is, recollection of the area, is that Hollybrook did not go through to David initially, because David was a little gravel road. So Hollybrook has been extended, it's currently, I believe, a right-in, right-out. Is that the intention on the long-range plan, for it always to be a right-in, right-out, or is that one of those temporary streets that it's just there until other access points build up?
Mr. McIntyre.
My recollection is that that was going to be a permanent right-in, right-out. And again, there's, there's more complexity about the road network system in this area. Yes, there is Hollybrook, and there was plans in the past that showed a series of cul-de-sacs going up. Those plans were superseded, there was an application that came forward some years ago. The lands further to the west were developed, there was some park dedication, and a number of lots were extended through there. So there's a road now that parallels Hollybrook that goes up and ties into the project just south of David. So it's, it's a more intricate road system, it's not just all funneling down Hollybrook. And in fact, one of the interests of the city is to gain additional accesses across, so it's not just relying on one road or the other, there are sort of secondary routes. But we can go back and dig out those plans and have that information for council.
Thank you. Is Hollybrook the one right next to the Water Quality Pond at David?
Right across, it's on both sides.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, it's right across, yeah, it's right across.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Counselor Secora.
Yeah, thank you very much, to the planning department, this is, map is very, very confusing that's here. Is Mason Avenue, looks like that road is going to be closed, or is it still there? Right there.
Your Worship, no, Mason is, is a, is a functioning road, and will be part of the functioning road system in the future for this area.
A full road system?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, so why are these people are saying here that Hollybrook is only right-in and right-out? Why can't they make a left-hand turn, go to Coast Meridian?
At David.
At David, right there. So, yeah.
Hollybrook is left turns here too, but up at David, Hollybrook is right-in and right-out.
Yeah, okay, what's the reason for right-in, right-out only for that street?
Mr. McIntyre. Not on the, it's not, sorry, it's not at Mason.
No, I believe the Mason intersection at Coast Meridian is all-turns movement there. It's up Hollybrook, up at, at David. It's, obviously, David Avenue is an arturo road, four-lane cross-section through there, as you're approaching the intersection. So the, the standard traffic safety design would call for, you know, limiting intersections, secondary intersections that close to a major intersection. So it may have been a situation where it was necessary to have an outlet on to David, but limited to just right-in, right-out. So rather than having people turning out left across traffic, or pulling in across traffic, it was limited to a, a right-in, right-out. So I believe there's even a median that's been constructed along that section of David, perhaps Counselor Asmussen would know better than that, or Counselor Hodge, but, yeah.
Tell me if I'm wrong, is this, this development, it looks like it's probably one block off Coast Meridian Road? Well, why would a block away be right-in and right-out, you know? Why? Why couldn't they not make a left-hand turn?
Your Worship, I believe the Mason-Cost Meridian intersection is, is not limited to right-in, right-out. The right-in, right-out is up Hollybrook, up at David Avenue, the north end.
Okay, okay, I've got, yeah, the way, the map here, okay. So, so they couldn't make a turn and go to Coast Meridian from this, from Hollybrook?
Through the chair, Hollybrook right now, it tees in with Mason at the south end, so people can go out that way and then use Mason as the access on to Coast Meridian, either going north or south.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Reamer.
Thank you. I actually drove up there on Saturday, and I headed east on David and then down Hollybrook. And I was unclear at that particular time. I don't believe there's anything on the Creekstone development that actually goes out to David, from what I could see. And Mason sort of ends in a cul-de-sac on the west side, and then, of course, you can go out Mason to Coast Meridian, where you can turn both right and left. But Hollybrook is the main road up to David, and so I, I understand what this gentleman is, is saying by that. So I hope that clarifies with you. Thank you.
Counselor Nicholson.
Thank you, Your Worship. On the multiple questions...
On the multiple questions about roads, it, it seems clear to me that we need to report back from engineering, which means that we probably can't deal with this at tonight's council meeting, because we'll want, because I'd like more information about the road system, the impacts of this development on it, and the broader issue of the road network in that whole neighborhood, which I'd like to get before we make a decision. But beyond that, we have some submissions from people that express their belief that this property was to be single-family homes. Someone says, "Two to four single-family homes," and somebody else says, "The understanding the surrounding area was primarily one-family residential zoning played a significant part in our choice to purchase." The report indicates that the OCP had this as small village, street-oriented village home, and says that that's, the proposed rezoning is consistent with the OCP land use. So I would take it from that, that the people who've written to us were mistaken in their belief at the time they bought their properties, is that?
Your worship, that is correct.
Although, if they looked only at zoning, they would have, the conclusion they reached was appropriate?
Your worship, throughout the Burke Mountain, the zoning was a variety of large, single-family holding land over a long period of time. But the community plan has designated that property for street-oriented, multiple-family residential as part of the official community plan for some time, since adoption.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm not as uncomfortable moving ahead with a vote tonight, only because these, these issues are sort of development permit and the traffic-related things. I suspect that the OCP is the guiding principle upon which we were laying out a road network, and the OCP, we're not, we're not varying enormously from it, we're not varying at all from it, but even if we were to vary by a, by a small amount, we still wouldn't be imposing any, any massive change on the traffic network that the streets were laid out for. So I don't, I don't have a problem proceeding with this one, but if individual council members feel that the traffic is such that we need to consider that first, that's, that's their prerogative. Are there any other speakers to this item? Councilor Asmussen.
Thank you. One question, I guess, when you talk about the access, because Hollybrook is designed to come down to Mason, which wears the satellites for the traffic to flow out. But at Glenbrook, crossing over to that site there, was there ever an access coming up there further down, linking on the south side there? Is, is there going to be any other egress further down there to the west? No. Okay.
Now, there was one shown on that earlier map that the gentleman produced.
Okay. So that is, okay. The other question I have is, like, this, you know, people, sometimes what they want and what's actually on the zoning, or sometimes they get a, a sales pitch, which isn't exactly what is there, and they should look rather than listen to what a salesman may say. And I think that's maybe where some of the mistake came on some of that part of it. My concern, though, does come, and I'd like to, to staff to look at, not on this one, but in futures, there are laneway widths. Can we move some of the garages in a little deeper, create a skirt on the back, to create more parking within the laneway on the skirt behind the garage and stuff like that, to, because some of the letters we got in these areas are more densified, is how can we create more parking for people within their units, take the parking off the streets? And I think that's part of the reasons in some of these developments were down there. For a six-milli, six-meter lane, is that too narrow? Can we maybe widen out? Or can we push the, the units back more, so we take up more space? We saw that we had a housing tour, and we saw how some of the units were pushed back. We still have the same laneway, the units pushed back. We created parking behind the garages, where people would, visitor could park, or the people could, and get somewhere. Because I think part of the issue in this whole area is the street parking, it's a drive-to community, and so I think we really need to think about those other areas, about parking in the community, how we can help the people buying this area mitigate. And I think that relates to the development we're talking about. We can go back to the developers, say, "Hey, how can you, in this area, start to mitigate those issues?" That's something I'd like to see worked on.
Thank you. Councilor O'Neill.
Question, essentially in response to the presentation from the little girl. In RTM-1, Street-Oriented Village Home Residential, they requested zoning here. Would there normally be space in, when, when the townhomes or whatever are built, would there normally be space left somewhere on, on the resulting development for trees to be replanted?
Your worship, there is a requirement for space between the, the garage and the home. The challenge, of course, with this type of multifamily development, street-oriented, almost brownstone-type of buildings, it's quite challenging from a space perspective, depending on the size of the lots and the length of the lots, it's a number of factors. Typically, replanting of, of, of trees is, is the direction, rather than saving large trees that may not be savable. There, there's no specific amenity requirement for common area in RTM-1, but there's a space requirement, adequate space for, for each, each lot, if you will, between the garage and the, and the unit. And those spaces, there may be an opportunity for some ornamental, smaller trees, but it is a challenging type of building typology to reforest. There is landscaping that occurs on the boulevard, there is some backyard landscaping, relatively limited, though.
So would that normally be an issue, then, that we would discuss for a development permit, and you would get more detailed plans, and they would be showing us where trees might be going?
Your worship, that's correct. The development permit will, will provide us a landscaping plan, and through that, we could encourage additional landscaping with appropriate size of trees, where they could be maintained, they could survive, et cetera.
Good, thank you.
Yep. Seeing no other council members' questions, are there any other speakers to this item? Are there any other speakers to this item? Third and final time, are there any other speakers to this item? Seeing none? No, there's a discussion about whether they want to. Well, go ahead, then. Do you have anything else, Sen? No, okay.
We were discussing this, I was just curious, and maybe I should have done my research, are there any bylaws stating, or is there a bylaw needs to be created in terms of this issue, where mature trees are capped? Because if you look at Westwood Plateau, and you drive along David Avenue, you see the beautiful mature trees left along David Avenue. But now where I'm just purchased a home at Burke Mountain, it's just all gone. It's just going really fast. I was just curious, is there actually a bylaw in place, or do we need to bid for there to be a bylaw change that states that mature trees need to be left too? Because this adds to, well, in numerous ways, the value of our community, the quality of our community, also what we're teaching the children about, you know, how we, how we use our, how we utilize our land. And this offers, gives them, teaches them to respect the land, and, and offers a safe place for the children to play. Because right now, with the parking issues, my neighbors were one of the people who wrote a letter pertaining to the parking on the street, and we're anxiously waiting the time when our kids can play in this area. And it may be five years down the road, as every time we turn around, someone's developing the land and not considering any parks or green spaces. So I was just curious, is there any bylaw about this?
There actually, we do have provisions under, actually under the Local Government Act that allows, requires essentially 5% of the land, or 5% of the value of land, to be retained as park. Now, the challenge with that, on Westwood Plateau was completely different, it was one big parcel. Here, it's all these little parcels. And in order to retain mature trees on existing properties, you need a clump of them, you need, say--
Bigger developments?
Well, you need a, a big clump of trees. So you'd have to take this entire property and say, "That's the trees we're retaining, is that entire property." Well, that, we can't do that with one landowner, so we're, we're left with challenges. Taking 5% of each parcel would create this little--
Not very much.
--chunk of little garage-sized parks. So we're, we're trying to develop parks of appropriate size, and we're also trying to, we're certainly retaining trees along streamside corridors and such, but it is, is a much bigger challenge when the parcels were an acre or two, and they're now being--
So maybe a bylaw that states something in terms of actual parks, you know, park spaces, you know, separate to where it's, it's government-owned land still. For instance, because I, we just moved from Sudabrook, let's say, in those kinds of developments, so that must fall into the 5%, but they'll create, or Kohani, developments, they'll create a park, an actual little park. So maybe there's some bylaw that could be made where you cannot buy up all the land within that area, certain portion belongs to the government, and within a certain distances allotted, there would need to be a park in the area between.
We're actually doing that, and that's with the 5% sort of thing, we're actually acquiring land and building, and developing parks.
Right.
Those are, you know, it's oddly enough, I live in an area of Coquitlam that has no parks, and will never, it will be generations before it ever has a decent number of parks. You will have more parks per resident than any other part of Coquitlam.
Should make me happy, but it's still sad.
I understand. It's, in the growing pain from now until then, will be a challenge.
All right.
Everybody there?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, though. Last time, any other speakers to this item? Seeing none? I declare this item closed.
Item 2, bylaw number 4288-2012, zoning amendment application for the property located at 614 to 622 Como Lake Avenue. Subject site is located on the south side of Como Lake Avenue, between Emerson and Dogwood Streets. The site is designated medium-density apartment residential in the official, official community plan. Zoning on the site into the south is RT-1, two-family residential. Zoning to the east and west is RM-3, medium-density apartment residential. And zoning to the north is RM-2, three-story, medium-density apartment residential. The site currently has single-family residents on each of the existing three lots. The applicant is seeking to rezone the site to RM-3, medium-density apartment residential, consistent with the OCP land use designation to facilitate development into 63-unit apartment building. Staff are recommending all final readings to bylaw number 4280. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any speakers to this item? Are there any speakers to this item? Third and final time, are there any speakers to this item? Seeing none, I'll declare this item closed.
Item 3, bylaw number 4289-2012, is a zoning amendment application for the property at 837 Lowheed Highway.
Your worship and members of council, my name is Michael Dollywall, development planner with the city. This site is located at the northwest corner of Lowheed Highway and Blue Mountain Street. The site and the surrounding sites are designated neighborhood commercial in the official community plan. The adjacent sites to the north, south, east, and west are all currently zoned C2 general commercial. The site is currently undeveloped. The applicant is seeking to rezone the site to C5 community commercial and develop a four-story commercial office building, with commercial retail units at grade and three stories of office space above. The proposal has the potential to create approximately 188 jobs. Staff are recommending second and third readings to zoning amendment bylaw number 4289-2012.
Councilor Reed.
Thank you. My question is through you to Mr. McIntyre. I notice I was away, unfortunately, when this was presented at committee, I believe. The access and egress for the parking is off Blue Mountain, is that correct?
Through the chair, that's my understanding, but there's, there's a bit of a staged program for the access, so perhaps, Michael, could you speak to that detail, please?
Well, the reason I'm asking is, Blue Mountain is busy now, and perhaps in the future, it could get very much busier, and that's what I'm worried about.
Through, through your worship, in the first phase of the development, there'll be two accesses, one on Lowheed and one on Blue Mountain, and restricted to right in and right out. As the sites to the north redevelop, the, all accesses will be consolidated off Roderick Avenue, and we've left, we're going to be obtaining a right-of-way from this site and a covenant onsite guaranteeing that when the sites to the north redevelop, there'll be an access directed off Roderick, and we'd close Blue Mountain and the Lowheed Highway accesses.
And who is obtaining this right-of-way?
The city will be acquiring it from this property.
Okay, but this property doesn't go right up to Roderick?
Yes, your worship, because of the, of the potential long-term challenges for access here, what we would do is, when the applications, the lands to the north redevelop, at that point, we would then consolidate and reorganize access to that quadrant to Roderick. So we're just setting the, the stage, the first stage here, allowing the development to proceed with, with access points. But in the long term, we would reorganize the, the access to this property, as well as properties to the north, as part of a consolidated access point.
And that works fine, provided that the two owners in the north decide to redevelop in the next 25 years. And if they don't?
Yeah, your worship, we were aware that it, there would be a time issue, there would be time required. In the interim, the, the access points for this property would work just fine. We've secured additional road dedication for potential changes to the road network, so we're comfortable that this will work in the interim, as well as the future.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Nicholson.
Thank you. We asked previously about setbacks and the, how close to the road we were getting and all that kind of thing. We've been given a, a couple of attachments that are helpful. I initially looked at it and thought, so on the Lowheed Highway, where nice and safe we have a boulevard, and then the sidewalk and then the building, so there's a cushion between the roadway and the sidewalk. But on Blue Mountain, I guess we're not quite as worried about the traffic, so it's a little quieter. And the sidewalk is right against the street and the boulevard, between the sidewalk and the building. In the drawing that's in the original package, it appears that the sidewalk comes up to the roadway on both sides. So I'm now left uncertain as to exactly what's intended. Comparing those drawings to this one.
But one of them has a boulevard, an extensive boulevard outside the property land, the other one has a very minor one.
Through your worship, the, the elevation that's shown as part of the package is a conceptual elevation. Prior to us bringing forward the development permit, the applicant just drew up a rendering in a computer program, but, yeah, the one that you have holding up, counselor. But we have, as through our development services department, have requested that the boulevard and sidewalk be separated on Lowheed Highway. And the, the extra, additional dedication on Blue Mountain would accommodate a number of, of transportation upgrades, is, that potentially widen the road, but maintain a boulevard and sidewalk in the future.
But I'm correct, then, that on Blue Mountain, the sidewalk will be adjacent to the roadway?
Currently, that, the sidewalk, yes, you're correct. Currently, the sidewalk will remain as it is on Blue Mountain Street, until the future redevelopment.
Thank you.
Thank you. No others? Are there any other speakers to this item? Are there any speakers to this item? Third and final time, are there any speakers to this item? Item number 3, seeing none, this item is closed.
Item 4, bylaw number 4268-2012, is a text amendment regarding subdivision regulations.
Morning star letter refers to item 4, not item 3.
This city-initiated zoning bylaw text amendment would amend the zoning bylaw to provide greater clarity to the current definition of the zoning bylaw for lot width. It would also include a new definition for approving officer, grant the city subdivision approving officer the discretion to allow minor lot width reductions for final lots in a subdivision application, allow the adjustment to zone boundaries for canceled roads and lanes, and provide new provisions that will minimize the impact of road winding on setbacks for existing buildings. The purpose of these amendments are to provide greater flexibility for subdivision-related applications. Staff are recommending all final readings to bylaw number 4268.
Are there any speakers to this item? Are there any speakers to this item? Third and final time, are, we have two council members with questions, Councilor Nicholson.
Thank you. Looking at the minimum lot width, would be, the expressed purpose-- Looking at the minimum lot width, the express purpose of the bylaw is to grant discretionary ability to allow minor lot width reductions for the final lot only newly created subdivisions. And I guess there are two pieces that I'm curious about. First one is minor, because what I see is 10% of the minimum lot width. That doesn't feel minor to me, but I'm an accountant, not a planner, so you might wish to speak to that. But I'm curious about why the final lot. It seems to me that if you were subdividing, some of the things we were just looking at, you're taking a piece of land, you're creating 16 lots. Looking at topography and all the rest of it, it might be that the logical place to lose the little bit that you need to lose to make it fit is not on the last lot, the one at the corner, but somewhere down the middle. I'd rather give you discretion to choose the lot than give you 10% as minor.
Your worship, I guess the terminology maybe is a little bit too strict. Last lot just means a lot.
Last one you thought of?
The last one that, I guess it's the last one that the approving officer approves. It can be any lot, depending, like you say, maybe a corner, maybe it's a specific topography. You're entirely correct. The provision though is entirely specific around one lot only in a subdivision.
So, thank you, Counselor Nicholson. I know you're still there. So you're thinking that if that 16 lots, you could actually get 15 without variance, you'd give the discretion for the last lot, the 16th lot, wherever it is, it's for that lot, not necessarily a specific lot in some order.
Correct. There can be any lot.
You're right. I had it the other way. I thought it was either the first lot or the last lot.
Well, we're both think logically to be planners, apparently.
Yes.
Okay, I'm still, I'm afraid, I think we have wonderful staff, and I love giving them discretion because it takes lots of things off our hands. I don't feel very comfortable with 10%. And could you, could you tell me that all the other municipalities in the lower mainland who are miles ahead of us in their work are using 10%? Or give me some reason why we're using 10%.
Well, your worship, I have used and I have employed provisions of this nature for many years in other municipalities. They exist, they are not wielded in a broad way. They, in fact, quite often approving officers would take great care in applying discretion where it might unduly be seen as unfair or prejudicial. There's rules that guide approving officers, so there's a great deal of care taken. So I can speak from experience that if council felt that 10% is excessive, certainly the intent was to just provide some level of flexibility to deal with what we call kind of a sliver rule, you know, applications that are so close that it would be seemingly over-processed to bring those forward, but I can certainly understand the concern. I have certainly applied these in my career, and they can be applied with discretion. And I guess some of the key words is it's up to 10%, and the discretion is always there for the approving officer to deny applying the discretion and to have that applicant go directly to council where there's any sense at all of public interest being affected or where we feel that it might be deemed as prejudicial or unfair to apply it, because potentially there could be many, many other lots in the area that have the same potential discretion. In that case, we might say, no, it doesn't make any sense. So that was the intent of bringing it forward. Certainly will take any direction from council on the magnitude of that discretion or if it's appropriate to have that discretion at all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Reed.
Thank you. I vaguely remember this, you shouldn't let me go away because then my memory stays better, but the RT1 zone, or is, does this just apply to the RT1 zone?
Your worship, the provisions that we're talking about now and in this item apply to all subdivisions, so any subdivision of land, single-family typically is what we're talking about.
So in the RT1 zone, you're saying then that the width of a lot is 10 meters or 33 feet, right? But I remember specifically in southwest Coquitlam finding a lot that was like 94 feet or something like that. You wanted, I guess RS3 would be, what, 45 feet or 47 feet or something like that? And I can't remember, Erica, it's close to that. So we had one particular one that became quite a contention, and this is my reason for feeling a little nervous about this, and I think it was before your time here, but one lot was going to come out at the appropriate width, which was 47, is it? 47 or 48? And the other one would have been considerably shorter, like three feet shorter or four feet or something.
Your worship, I have to know, the specific zoning that we're, sorry, we're referencing, Counselor Reed?
Okay, this was RS1 to RS3.
So RS1 has a lot width of 13 and a half meters. RS3 has the same lot width. And I, and just generally speaking, your worship, staff can certainly bring all reductions forward as development variance permits. There's no question that we can continue to do that, and there are many applications that council would not see because staff discourage certain types of subdivisions that we would feel inappropriate. The idea was to provide a small range of tolerance in cases where such would be deemed appropriate. Typically, it's where lots are oversized, so there's still, all other zoning provisions have to be met for the approving officer to apply that minimum level of discretion. So we do find, particularly in all parts of Coquitlam, as any other jurisdiction, subdivision occurred over 30, 40, 50 years. There's a wide range of lots, and often the new standards of zoning don't fit existing pattern of lots, and in some cases, it's beneficial to apply, to have the ability to apply a very, very limited amount of discretion where it's appropriate to do so. I certainly hear the concern from Counselor Reed. There may always be cases where something may be deemed controversial, and depending on the person's perspective, it may not be minor. Counselor Nicholson made the point. Typically, though, these provisions reflect what other jurisdictions are doing and what they are granting to other approving officers in their jurisdictions to allow subdivision of land and some discretion in that act.
I can probably actually go by and drive by that particular property and get the address so I can check it out, because it created quite a kerfuffle in the neighborhood, and I don't know if you remember it, Jim, but it was right in central Coquitlam, and it was quite, it was like, they came in and wanted two or three feet less because, it would be darned if I can remember what it was, but I will remember, and then I will get back to you, because I'm not really excited about this. Thank you.
Counselor Sikora.
Thank you very much. So this bylaw would give you a maximum up to 10%, not more than that. Thank you. Now, this has got nothing with side coverage or heights of any buildings. Thank you very much.
I want to erase the lot width, yeah, on subdivision. Counselors Hodge.
So just to be clear, at the current process, if an applicant came forward and wanted to put in four lots where it could technically only put three, this would give the ability to create that fourth lot without it going to us, which means, under the current lead, they would have to go to public hearing to create, or is this just, it would go through variance? I'm just not clear on the process. If it didn't come to us, what the public input would be? Because under this, there would be no public input, but currently there would have to be at some point, whether it's through board of variance or a rezoning. Is that correct?
Your worship, there may be a couple of scenarios. We have, for instance, a situation where a property requires rezoning from an existing single-family zone to a new single-family zone in the, somewhere in the northeast or somewhere even in the southwest. If that subdivision plan to that new zone required discretion be applied to one lot, the zoning would still come forward for council's consideration. In that zoning consideration, we'd advise council that the number of lots being proposed, and council mayor may not approve the zoning. However, should they approve the zoning based on the official community plan, the approving officer would then move to subdivide the property with all the appropriate provisions and subdivision bylaw, et cetera, and would, prior to that, have deemed that that discretion can be applied. Typically, we wouldn't bring forward a rezoning application in that case unless we felt that the discretion was, should be applied in that case. If the city staff felt that discretion should not be applied in that case, but there was a rezoning, we would require the applicant to apply for a variance potentially. And keep in mind that sometimes it could be variances for different facts related to the application. It could be an existing home that has to be retained, setbacks are not appropriate under the new subdivision and zoning, so there may be a variety of factors. If a site doesn't require rezoning, then it would be strictly a subdivision application, and it would be in front of the approving officer, strictly for them to apply, decide whether to apply the discretion in that particular case or not. I do note, though, that in cases where the approving officer questions whether the discretion should be applied, they can contact surrounding residents, they can have a approving officer's hearing under the Act, Land Title Act, they can solicit feedback from residents if they feel that discretion shouldn't be applied. And I've been familiar with cases of this nature in my other previous municipal experience, and in those cases, the developers would advise that discretion would not be applied, and you have to apply for a development variance permit. So there are many, typically, it's a process that allows, and it's intended to allow a reasonable application, particularly in cases where lots are panhandle lots, it could be cul-de-sac lots, it could be very odd-shaped properties, and it might just not meet the discrete definition of lot width. And that was the intent. Hopefully, that answers Counselor Hodge's question.
And again, through the chair, I'm just curious. So the person who would have, who would make the discretion or have that discretionary ability to decide is also the same person who would use their discretion to decide whether they should use discretion in making the decision?
Correct. As applied by, in other municipalities, the approving officer would have the discretion as to whether to apply that or not. And in cases where they deem it to be not clear, we would not move to apply that discretion.
Okay. I guess, yeah, and I think in a lot of cases, this would be applied using discretion. But I think where my concern on this would be is that it takes out of the public eye and out of the public view some decision-making process. And I think that things that, to me, may seem perfectly logical, I've, in my short time on council, I've already discovered that things that made complete sense to me sometimes didn't make complete sense to the people who live in that neighborhood. And it's not a reflection of the ability of staff to make those decisions. My concern would be is that it takes that decision-making process out of this room and out of this venue to somewhere else where it's not quite as transparent. Thank you.
And yet, there are lots of instances when, for example, we make the decision to rezone a property, and we also make the decision as to what zoning will apply to it, and we don't defer that to some other organization. I'm going to preamble with something I don't normally say during a public hearing. I don't have any problem with giving discretion for that minor variance. I'm having, I'm still having curiosity, it's not even trouble with it, but curiosity as to why we wouldn't also give you the discretion to say, vary the lot width by up to 10% of a lot's width, in that, in this case of a 40-foot lot width by four feet, but you could split that variance up among various lots within that, to give you the discretion that say, okay, well, this one could take two of the feet, that one could take two feet, and then we've made up the four feet. Applying all the variance to one lot, I think we're talking about such minor numbers here, and I suspect that the discretion that would be applied would be discretion that suggests that if it's going to affect the neighborhood, it's not going to, if anyone's going to notice for that matter, you wouldn't apply it. So I'm curious as to why we wouldn't allow you the discretion to split it up.
I guess to answer your question, your worship, the idea was, and the way that I've seen it applied, was to provide a very simple tool, rather than have the staff make larger discretionary decisions on multiple lots. I don't want to alarm council in that we're swamped with applications to vary lot widths, where we're not. So I just want to make the point, it's a tool that likely affects a very small number of applications. We, while we have legal advice and says, yes, this is entirely fine, as we expand that to multiple lots in multiple areas, it becomes a broader tool, and I would say that becomes council's prerogative as well. I'm not in disagreement with council. The idea was to provide a very, very small tool that could help us in some cases avoid over-process and still get the same, generally the same type of public end result. That's, I'll leave it at that. We're not, this tool is not fundamentally necessary for staff. We can continue to bring applications back to council. It was an attempt to streamline and potentially take out of our bailiwick certain types of applications that would be unduly impacting our process.
Would staff be opposed to the, like, let's take the 10-meter lot, the 33-foot lot. You have a 66-foot lot, you subdivide it into 33. But if it's a 63-foot lot, you'd like the ability to make a 33-foot lot in a 30-foot lot. Why not 231 and a half, so no one's going to notice? And it seems to me that's where several council members are heading.
Your worship, if I could, I spent many years as a subdivision approving officer, not of late, thankfully, I got some very capable people in here that do that for me. I would be a little concerned as an approving officer, if you had that degree, if discretion, because with discretion, there's judgment, but also there's pressure, and there's pressure to consider this option or that option. So sometimes opening too many doors can create a lot of pressure. Just getting back to the 10% thing, this is recollection from way back, I think at Kelowna, what they allowed the approving officer to do to vary lot widths down to not less than 10% of the perimeter of a lot. And I believe also from Alberta, too, the 10% rules that are applied there with development officers. So there is some precedent. But again, just let us reiterate, we're just trying to find a way to help and streamline some of the processes. It's not a big deal if there is concern that we might be seen, or it might be the perception out there that matters are being dealt with by staff behind closed doors, and the public doesn't have access to that for information or input, fair enough. We don't want to, we don't want to throw a monkey wrench into that. We're just trying to find some ways to make some efficiencies, and if council has concerns in this regard, we're quite prepared to.
My comments shouldn't have been taken that way. My comments should have been taken that I think we might even, you might not be asking for enough discretion. I think there's some flexibility that we can grant you, but, because I don't have that issue with it. Counselor Sikora.
Yeah, thank you very much. So if I buy, let's say, an 80-foot lot, and get 10%, so that is a little less than 77 feet, am I correct? With a 10% discretion? So then, if I want to have, say, a 45-foot lot, the second lot is 32 feet, would it be okay?
What would you do with the other 12 feet?
There's nothing, there's no 12 feet there. No, because if I'm buying an 85-foot lot, and I got a 10% discretion, so I got a little more than eight feet. So now that lot...
10% of one of the lots.
So that lot would be 77 feet, right?
No, no, it's 10% of one of the lots. So in that case, it would be 10% of half, would be about four feet of discretion.
Okay, so then, you get 81 feet. So let's say, Dan, one of the lots could be 40 feet, the other one 41, but what happened if I wanted a 45-foot lot, and the other one would be some 30-odd foot lot? Would that be permissible? There's a curve for you, okay? Because this, the reality can happen. Council members have no power then. It's up to you people to make that decision, right?
There's a numerous number of scenarios. I do, it's not, in reality, it doesn't work as complicated as Counselor Sikora is noting. There are certainly examples where a property is exactly the 10% allowed to be able to get that second lot, but most of the time, we're talking about pre-existing parcels that have already been demised, and demising them can only create certain types of parcels, if you will, so it, yes, I guess to answer the question, 10% is the maximum that the approving officer could potentially apply in a particular scenario.
I didn't think for one minute I was making anything complicated. I thought that there was just common sense was applied there. But, you know, I'm just saying, can it somehow just work without the council members even knowing about it? Because once we pass this bylaw, we really have no say anymore.
That's right.
That's giving a lot of power to the staff.
It wouldn't allow, if the minimum permitted lot size was 41, you wouldn't be able to go down to 32 by throwing some extra feet on the other lot. You're still allowed up to 10% of the minimum.
So what you'd say that you'd only allow, if it's 81 feet, you'd only allow a 40-foot and a 41-foot lot? Then that would make more sense.
That's what it says, yep.
Well, that's what, I don't know how you interpret that bylaw. There's many ways of interpreting a bylaw.
Okay. Are there any other speakers to this item? Are there any other speakers to this item? Third and final time, are there any other speakers to this item? Seeing none, I declare this item and the public hearing adjourned. And about staff, we're going to do some working out here, and we'll set up a council meeting and get going in a few minutes.